Today is Thursday, September 3rd, 2015. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Longston.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village President.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Morris.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley. Michael.
And we also have present telephonically, Trustee Sadeve. He's traveling on business out of town. Can you hear us, Trustee Sadeve?
I can hear you, Ben. Thank you.
So he is here. We do have a forum. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to discuss the possibility of having a 180-day moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for subdivisions of property within the Village of Riverside. Some of you may be aware that we earlier received an application for a subdivision at 225 Long Common that had occasioned quite a bit of interest at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That is not the topic that is on our agenda tonight for the public hearing. However, during the discussion of that subdivision, an issue was raised as to the relevance of language existing within the preservation ordinance with regard to subdivisions within our village. There seem to be two countervailing views. One, thinking that it is an appropriate part of the code to consider with regard to subdivisions; and other, thinking that we should limit our opinions to the subdivision language within the ordinance itself. In order to rectify that perceived ambiguity by some, we are considering whether or not we should have a moratorium for 180 days to look at that language, to see if any further language might be necessary to clarify those matters. So that is our purpose here this evening. If anyone would like to comment on that issue, I welcome you to come to the podium. Please just state your name and address, and then make your statement to the board. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Dixon.
Good evening.
This is the public hearing preceding our regular board meeting. As soon as we have public comment on the public hearing and discussion, we will adjourn this meeting and immediately reconvene our regular trustee board meeting for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Because it is a public hearing, we should swear in the witnesses.
If anyone intends to make a statement to the board during the public hearing, could you please rise and be sworn by the village clerk?
That's mine to the moratorium.
Yes. So you'll need to be sworn as well. Ms. Haley.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dixon.
Is the comment period?
Yes, it is.
My name is Robert Dixon. I'm a resident of Riverside. I'm also serving as the president of the Frederick Law Olmstead Society. I shared comments from that group with the village, and wanted to read it here in the comment period. The Frederick Law Olmstead Society favors a moratorium until such time as the Board of Trustees, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Preservation Commission, and any other applicable commissions examine the history and current code provisions and craft any necessary revisions. Exempting the pending application for subdivision of the property at 225 Long Common from the moratorium may result in a too hasty interpretation of the code with respect to this property. We are troubled by the questionable legal conclusion in the staff's memo on the moratorium that could, if accepted, stop the board from considering its mandate to, quote, "enforce regulations which shall prohibit the further subdivision of originally-platted lots such as this property." Of particular concern, the memo asserts, "Starting in June 2006, subdivisions of all lots were permitted so long as the subdivision met the bulk standards set forth in the zoning code and the standards set forth in the subdivision code." However, the 2006 ordinance adopting our current subdivision code neither mentions nor changes the section of the preservation code instructing the board to prohibit subdivisions of originally-platted lots. The preservation code cannot be repealed by implication. The preservation code was left intact to coexist with the 2006 subdivision provisions, that its mandate remains with respect to originally-platted lots, while our subdivision code provides guidance with respect to other lots. This gives the board maximum flexibility to protect this landmark community. We urge the board to avoid taking a position that would in any way stop it from prohibiting the subdivision of originally-platted lots. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Stack.
President Sellers, members of the board, and Paul Stack. I got the draft ordinance. I have no problem with the draft ordinance with one exception, and that is the third recital where it says, "Whereas a recent application for subdivision of property within the village has revealed internal conflicts within the various codes of the village relative to subdivisions." I do not believe there is any internal conflict at the present time within the various codes. I just talked to President Wyattuck behind me. He agrees. He doesn't see any internal conflict. This is an ordinance that both he and I, over a period of 12 years, enforced as village president. That particular recital I don't think is necessary, or particularly even helpful, to what you're trying to do today with the moratorium. So I would say that I have no problem with this ordinance, proposed ordinance, if that recital is removed. If the recital stays in there, then I think we have a very significant issue which has to be addressed, and I think at this point, the board does not have sufficient information to address that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. Next, please. Mr. Wyattuck.
Mr. President, members of the board, Jack Wyattuck, 165 Bart from Rome. I rise to also, I guess, generally support President Stack's conclusion here with regard to the 180-day moratorium. I have no problem with the moratorium. However, I would like to add to that, that I believe that part of the issue that we have in discussing this matter is a matter of institutional memory. I think it became evident at the public hearing regarding the 225 Long Common property. There was a long period of time over which the current situation that we have in the village relative to our current zoning code, the current subdivision ordinance, and the preservation ordinance, and how these things all came together. They came together at different times, and as we built on this, we eventually came to a need during about, from 2003 to 2005, a project that the Planning Commission took over to rewrite the zoning code, to revise the zoning code. That was completed in, at the end of 2005 and adopted by the board. That did not, however, affect the fact that in 1990, subdivision was prohibited by ordinance, which you will find in the code. However, after that code was completed, and the fact that the preservation ordinance was put in place in 1991, it was the conclusion of the then-sitting board that the many of the problems that existed with our zoning code and with our understanding of what we could do, and with our desire to be as flexible as possible, but also understanding the great job that the board has to do to maintain the legacy of this community, which has been established and confirmed by the actions of the board over the last 100 years or so. It was concluded that the subdivision ordinance, which was then in place following the new code, was overly restrictive and basically bound the hands of any future board. And as a result, it was felt that with the new code, which addressed many of the problems that we had in terms of what we would allow in the village, and with the existing preservation ordinance, which now had about 15 years under its belt, that the board would have the necessary guidance on how to deal with subdivision requests in the future. And thus, the board adopted a new detailed ordinance, which was adopted in June of 2006, and I think may have had an amendment or two since that time relative to some tweaking of surveying and certifications that are required. But I think the point is, that I want to make, is that the board has the necessary tools in place right now to make these kind of decisions. And keep in mind that the board should have the power to do anything that is necessary to serve the best interests of this community. Oftentimes, they are at odds. Now, preservation is many times at odds with what somebody wants to do. But the tools are there, and it's just necessary that the board understand what those tools are very clearly, and look to the guidance of the ordinances which have been crafted and carefully tweaked over a long period of time to help guide and make the decisions which will preserve our community. And so again, I have no problem with the moratorium. You want to sit around and talk about that? That's fine. It will probably help all of those who, you know, currently, you know, are considering what they want to do in the community. But it's, you know, you have the tools, and don't, you know, just open the toolbox and look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Next, please. I saw more hands than that earlier. Yes, sir. Mr. Scheick.
I'm Stanley Scheick. I live on Delaplane Road, 189 Delaplane Road. I do support the moratorium, but I would not want to make an exception to the property that brings the issue up. That is the 225 property on Long Common. And that's because I'm concerned, frankly, about the water issue. I think that applies because I think we need ordinances to cover what we're looking at when we look at the subdividing of that property. We're looking at a lot of shedding of water upstream down onto the downstream properties. We're also looking at shedding of water onto those houses that already stand astride near that property. So I think that it is important to maintain that consideration in any consideration that the board wishes to make about the subdivision of the property. There are people living in that area right beside that house that already are complaining of floodwaters or inundations, and there are people much farther down the line that get complaint about inundation from alterations made in properties down there. I know for a fact that codes against ponding of water, if you do anything on your property that increases ponding of water, that's subject to a code violation citation. If you do anything that interrupts the natural flow of water, that is subject also to a code violation. If you do anything to cause any kind of alteration in how that water spreads out, be it ponding or blocking the flow, that's subject to citation. It seems to be so obvious that putting a property up at that headwaters is going to cause lots more flooding downstream, and a great deal of flooding in the immediate presence of that property, that even just thinking about that, that you are already using ordinances against people downstream who have made small alterations in their property. So you're applying ordinances against, as I say, ponding, interrupting flow, all of which, subdividing this property and putting a building up on it will, right off the bat, be subject to those ordinances, at least subject to those complaints from people who already are very upset about the possibility of more water coming down on them up there on the western side of that oval. And finally, I did have a minor point. I don't know how far this goes, but in the code itself, I think it's the code for the provision under the preservation ordinances that are in the zoning code, there is a statement that interpretation, in their interpretation and application, provisions of these regulations shall be held to be minimum requirements. Where the provisions of any federal, state, or village statute, regulation, ordinance impose greater restriction than those of these regulations, such federal statute, regulation, ordinance shall prevail. That is, I seem to be hearing that the code for the preservation of these sites is stricter than our zoning code is. But within the zoning code, there is this scope which says that ordinances which are stricter will take precedence over those ordinances which are more minimal. So I think that has to be considered, too, if you wish to proceed, if you wish to set aside those provisions of the preservation ordinance, so you can proceed just on the zoning. I think that goes against the interpretation of the scope of interpretation of the regulations regarding zoning. In other words, those provisions in the preservation code should take precedence. So I would argue that. But my major argument is, don't make the mistake of adding more water to that area, which is already flooded, so flooded that people are already arguing with each other getting the village issue citations against neighbors who have done some alteration in their property. So it's almost insanity to think that the village would go ahead and allow this new property to be built, when it's so obvious any structure that goes up there, any new structure, is going to be shedding water and only adding to that problem. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Scheick. Mr. Ray. And again, I encourage everyone, let's limit our comments to the question of the moratorium. We are not here to discuss the subdivision of 225 Long Common. Mr. Ray.
Well, Rich Ray, 262 Lionel. When the attorney pointed out that the language of the preservation ordinance regarding density and not subdividing was advisory, how'd he put it? I naturally thought that somewhere in the zoning code, it would have been implemented. Well, guess what? I found it wasn't in the zoning code, okay? However, I found a very strange paragraph in Title VIII, which is the building regulations. And 481 actually talks about subdivision regulations and gives some guidelines regarding subdivisions. So somehow, in my opinion, somehow the language got buried in the building regulations as opposed to the zoning regulations. The, I can point out in 485, "All lots created by subdivision," this is in the building code now, remember, "shall conform to requirements of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance enforced at the time of the subdivision made and shall be consistent with the density and existing pattern of development in the district." Now, that does, in fact, provide some guidance, doesn't it? It's not, that particular district isn't highly dense in terms of housing. The lots are quite large. So there is some support for that, but that's about it. As the gentleman before me spoke, a number of people at the public hearing rose to talk about the problem of backyard flooding. And this gentleman brought up the opinion that allowing another building to be built north of that property would intensify that, which is what he reinforced tonight. Well, something occurred to me, being technician by nature, an architect. What about the village purchasing a piece of that property and putting retention, a detention basin there, that would intercept that water? And possibly do some grading of the backyards of those properties to drain water that might accumulate in those properties into a detention basin at the north end of that property? That would accomplish a lot of things. It would satisfy the owner, his desire to obtain some substantial, some gain by subdividing his property before he sells his house. And number two, it would relieve a problem that evidently is pretty prevalent in that area. So I leave you with that thought. I don't know whether that was appropriate for this issue of this moratorium. I frankly don't understand why you need a moratorium, but that's beside the point. It seems to me that the direction has been pretty clearly given in the writing of the preservation ordinance, and has been enforced or reinforced by the subdivision regulation, Chapter 481 of Title VIII, which is building requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Further comments, please?
If we enforce that, using that for our case, it's a way.
I mean, the water issue really isn't germane to the question of the moratorium. We are all very sensitive at the village board level as to the water problems we have in town. So as usual, Mr. Ray always has some ideas that are kind of outside the box that we will consider. So are there further?
Well, I'm in the life of the issue.
Yeah. So are there further comments on the moratorium issue? Okay, hearing none, I will close the, oh, was there somebody? I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't see.
My name is Marilyn Longwell, and I live at 235 Long Common. And I do want to reinforce what's been said about the water, because when it rains a lot, half of my backyard is filled with water, and the neighbors, just to the north of me, it's even worse for them. I have no problem with the moratorium. I have a problem with the preface, because it appeared to me as though it was attempting to make as if it were law the position that was taken at the zoning committee hearing, which is that the preservation ordinance isn't really valid and doesn't control anything. And it appears to me that it's in preparation for further movement on this particular petition, which is, of course, why apparently it was excluded from the moratorium. And I don't think that it will negate the validity of the preservation ordinance, frankly. People try this kind of thing frequently, and I think that judges have a funny way of interpreting for themselves what the ordinances were and whether there was a conflict. So outside of that, I have no problem with the moratorium. It might calm things down a bit, particularly if it were to include the current petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell, you need to be sworn before you make your comments.
I agree.
Mr. Morris? Do you need to be honest?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Steve Campbell, Fairbank Road. One of the things that I am just uncertain about, I don't know if this is a question, but is subdivision a right of use, or is it not a right of use? And if it is, in fact, a right of use, I am unaware of a moratorium being placed on a right of use previously. And the reason that I ask this is because it has been advanced by some that subdivision is currently a right of use. And it's not, in my mind, because everyone has to seek a special hearing, and what they are asking for is an entitlement, an additional right of use on the land. It's nothing that's guaranteed now. Now, at some point in time, when the Louisiana Purchase was made, there were no zoning laws. There were no subdivision laws. You could do what you wanted with the land. But as we have come down to smaller and smaller units of government, there have been additional conditions placed on what people can do with land. So, and I think that that question really goes to the very heart of the whole question. And I know that we're not discussing the petition currently before the board. But if it's a right of use, then why does someone need to file for a public hearing and ask for permission to subdivide? They should be able to just draw it up, take it down to the recorders, record it, and it's a done deal. So in that way, I think that the moratorium is, has one idea, which I believe has always been in place, because it's ultimately up to the village board on whether that type of thing moves forward. So it's an extra. It's permission, no different than, can I cover a little more ground, or can I build something that's a half a foot higher? And it does strike me as odd that something that we've previously covered, which is illumination levels of signs, is not a right of use, but subdividing existing previously-platted lots is a right of use. So in that context, I think that that's a question that just needs to be answered, because if it's a right of use, I don't know if the board has the legal authority to put a moratorium on it. That would be, in my mind, similar to the board putting a six-month moratorium on people moving into a residential property, which is currently a right of use. But anything that we have to go before the village board and before a commission, where we publish for the hearing, is seeking the village authority, whomever is seated up here on the dais, to please allow me to do something extra that's not allowed. So if it's already not allowed as a matter of the course of law, then why do we need to put a moratorium on it? All that you're really saying is, is we don't want to hear another one for six months. But I thought that residents and petitioners always had the right to approach the village and seek a public hearing. So again, that seems to me to be a conflict. Somebody wants to come and have the public hearing, but just because there's a preclusion on subdivisions, they can't have it? Well, there's always kind of been a preclusion in one form or another on subdivisions. And, you know, there's, there are other questions related to this all, but that's a very basic one that, and I'm not trying to put anybody in the box, could the village attorney comment? At least give me direction on how to consider that? Because I don't see how the two can exist together.
I mean, that's something that the board can discuss during our discussion about the, about the proposed moratorium. But we're not going to have the village attorney give any legal opinions.
All right, but I, I think that this is, is an issue, and I don't wish to tie the other petition up within tonight's discussion, but it seems that having a moratorium is really kind of redundant, because it's always no. The default answer on a subdivision is no. Am I correct in the current lay of the land, so to speak, that the standard answer for a subdivision of an existing lot is no, but you have to go and seek permission? Is that the current process?
There's not a default answer with regard to subdivision. That's why we have the relevant ordinances. That's the purpose of taking a further look at them with regard to the moratorium. But if you could finish your comment.
There is, but there is a default answer on that question. So, and it's not my question, it's a question of the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Further comments? Hearing none, that will conclude the public comment section of this public hearing. It's now time for the village board to have a conversation. As you know, the ordinance enacting the moratorium is on our formal agenda at our next, at our regular meeting following this. But we can have our conversation now, and then we can actually do our voting during our regular meeting. So, comment from the trustees?
There was a point brought up regarding the third whereas clause in the ordinance where it states that subdivision of the property within the village has revealed internal conflicts within the various codes. I'm wondering, I appreciate the comments that were made by President Stack. Would it be appropriate to say alleged or possible conflicts?
Sure. Yeah.
I'm not, I mean, I guess I was wondering why that whereas is needed at all.
Yeah, you could strike it up.
I was struck.
It seems, it seems to me that we need to state the reason we're doing this, though. I mean, it makes sense for me, to me, to have it in there, but I defer to the attorney on that.
I mean, it seems to me the next whereas gives sufficient reason for the moratorium.
I agree.
Okay, so we will strike. Is that meaningful to everyone? Yes? Further comments? All right. With that change, we will, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Motion second.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pollak, second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Galloway.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Olmsted.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Mr. Setteby?
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.